Go ahead and start. It'll be the work session first, and we'll have a special call meeting right after the work session. Item number one is extension on resolution for moratorium on accepting applications for rezoning any subdivision of land or residential use except for those court ordered. And this resolution's got another paragraph in it that the other one didn't. Avery, you want to explain that?
Yes, Chairman and Commissioners. We have a 90-day extension of the current moratorium that's already in place. It's being extended another 90 days so the planning commission can consider the options that have been prepared and that have been submitted for their review. And we added an exemption in this extension because there are some instances where there are estate matters pending in probate court or other court-ordered splits that need to be considered so that those cases can be resolved. So we've allowed a method for an exemption. Somebody can apply for an exemption to be considered for those extenuating circumstances so those cases in probate court or in Superior Court can continue to move forward.
Any questions? David, you have any?
Yes.
Okay. Item number two is request for refund of property taxes. We've got a lady that was going to buy some property at the tax sale, but she went and paid the taxes and then paying them for years. And then in her passing, her son has determined that she doesn't own the land and now wants a refund on the taxes. But she's not here to explain why she paid the taxes. You want to give us our legal position?
Typically, I mean, if somebody pays the taxes on a property, they may pay for it for any number of reasons. It doesn't have to be that they own it. They may be paying it for somebody else. And I, again, we don't know the reasons in this circumstance of why she was paying the taxes. It'd be different, I guess, if she was here and could come back and tell us why, if it was a mistake, or if she was doing it on purpose or not. But to have somebody else come and claim those as a refund is just difficult to consider.
And the county has never refunded taxes like that, so that'll be something to think about before the next meeting or any more discussion. Okay, discussion of raises or bonuses for employees.
I'd like for us to have that conversation because one thing that I've noticed in talking with several department heads throughout the years that we're running into some... Bonuses are very well appreciated by all of us who get one because a bonus is a sum of money that you don't normally get in your paycheck. And if you pay it toward the end of the year at Christmas times, it becomes very beneficial to our employees. But from what I'm gathering, what's happening to us by doing bonuses is we're falling behind in our salaries, in our wages. And as people retire or leave, you say, well, I can, I'll replace them with someone who has less experience and less money. That isn't the case today. COVID is, I think, has changed a lot of employee-employer relationships. For that, I'd like for us to look... It's good to make sure we feel good with our employees' or making in each department and talk to department heads and if, you know, can you replace those employees today for the same money if they were to leave? That's what I think about it at this point.
That's my opinion. I'd rather do raises than bonuses. Bonuses are good one time a year, but a raise lasts all year long and then it, year after year after year. And we can get our employees up by giving raises up to a better wage. Any more discussion? Well, we'll vote on that at the next meeting.
So if we vote on this and you say we're going to actually the next meeting, are we looking at raises across the board?
Be by departments. We'll, in the past, we've let the department heads do evaluations of all the employees, and we give the raises to the people that work.
What would we be voting on, just to elect to forego bonuses and instead do the raise? Or would we actually be voting on an actual percentage amount to allocate?
We won't be voting on an actual percentage. That'll be something we'll talk about later. But it'll be where to give bonuses or raises.
When you get ready to do this and pass it on to the department heads, we will need to be able to give them some direction as to how much will be added to their budget for that. And we'll also need to know, several departments have already given raises since the budget year started, and would this be a second raise for those departments or not?
Yeah, that was something we'll have to determine after we determine whether it's a bonus or a raise. In the next meeting, it'll just be a vote whether it's a raise or a bonus. And then we'll work it out at the next work session.
If we can be of assistance, we have pretty real-time employment data as far as salaries and competitive positions. It's based on SIC codes, it's not county road department versus county road department, but it's equipment operator or something like that. If we can be of assistance, we'll run those reports for you, and that way you can see, you know, based on drive times, what buckets you're fishing out of when you're paying at certain scales.
Yeah, we'd like you to run that out for us and give us...
I'll give it out so we can find out or whoever can find out what jobs.
To break down clerical, I mean, it just says clerical, but it could be in any department. It doesn't necessarily say tax assessor or whatever, but you can...
Right, if you're not competing with other tax assessors, you're competing with other clerical.
Okay, that kind of comes, okay, thank you.
So then is it more specific to our demographics? Or are we looking at what you would pay a heavy equipment operator in Atlanta, or you'd pay one in Douglas County?
It's really what we can configure however, so you can do a drop time.
Okay.
If you drop a dock in Buckhannon and say a 50-minute drive time or 45-minute drive time.
Or like a 30 or something, yeah.
Right, so it's, we use it a lot with our assisting industries to help them determine kind of annual hours, so it's pretty helpful data.
Okay. Any more discussion? Item number four is public hearing, the rezoning request by Tracy Pope for Hurleson County Tax Map 0025-0036, property located on Highway 100, request from A1 to C-GB. This has been before the zoning board twice. It passed the zoning board 3-0 on the last meeting. Do you have any question?
Why did it have to go before the zoning board twice?
They didn't, they didn't vote on it the first time. There was something about some landlines that they were unsure of, and I think Mr. Pope has had the property lines run, and there's no question about where it's located now. You want to get up? Go ahead, any questions with Mr. Pope?
Just...
Good. Be on the next meeting, on the regular meeting, that first Tuesday in September.
Mr. Chairman, we need to ask if there's any opposition?
Okay, yes, is there any opposition? Okay. Mr. Williams? It's for alcohol license at... Property located on 100. Tracy Pope has applied for.
Yes, I know when I seen the plan board, it was rejected. The policies and things that were wrong with the property line and had to have a survey and all that.
Yeah.
He had all that done.
He said all that done, had everything done that y'all requested.
I'm just, I'm just...
Okay. Thank you for your comment.
So Mr. Pope is here?
Yes.
Could he tell us what he's going to do with it?
You want to stand up and tell us?
Can you pick into your microphones? So Mr. Pope, you're here? Okay, hey, so could you tell us what you're going to do at the property? Are you going to open up a venue of some sort?
Around now, it's going to be in like a piece of wing place.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any more question? Opposition, in favor? Okay, that brings an end to the work session.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
For another item? I see John's not here tonight, but Ryan, you were on the second. Can you give us, me and our county, an update on what the status for the non-binding mediation is for the loss, where we stand on that? Two weeks have gone by. We hadn't heard anything back, and time is running.
I think right now it's on the city agreement. I mean, we've submitted our offer to them. I think, you know, it's up to them to come up with a resolution or at least count, give us some type of a counter. As far as I know, we've got a little time in which to set up this non-binding arbitration before our December 31st deadline.
I think right now we have to go ahead and set up the non-binding arbitration. And we've got three people that we're looking at.
Yes.
One of them's the city manager from La Grange, the county administrator from Meriwether County, and a retired judge.
That's correct. And we've given all those names to Sam Price, the attorney for the city of Bremen, and his initial indication was that Judge Kirby would probably be the best choice, but he was going to talk to the city manager and get back to us. And I have not heard back from him. But we had a lengthy discussion about the next steps in the process, which is selecting a mediator to assist in the facilitating the process of negotiations and then hold another meeting with all the parties and that mediator to see if we can have any resolution on the issues. But you are correct, we need to proceed with that as quickly as possible, and we're trying to do that, and we're waiting on them to let us know who, which one of those names works for them, and we can go forward.
Did you say Judge Kirby, Avery?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, and I'm glad, but there's a couple of things that, and tell me, Chairman, if I'm wrong, Avery. This has a huge effect on our current budget that we passed as of July 1, because December 1, if the law certificate goes away, we would lose approximately $1.25 million in revenue over the next six months.
Was it, it's December 31st, is it?
Yes, December, okay, end of the year. But the last, we'd lose about $1.25 million in this budget. We also...
But let me clarify something here.
Yes, sir.
We can't sign this thing December 31st. It has to be in the hands of the revenue department, and they recognize that they have received it before December 31st.
Okay.
So we, there's no signing it at 6 o'clock December 31st.
Okay. So that's one line of revenue we need to be careful of as the county. Another thing that would affect the county is when we set the millage this year for the upcoming, our collection next year of our, that we'll be collecting come December 31st, we're collecting money for the operation of next year. So if we lose that last certificate in the six, first six months, and we don't have it the last six months of 2023 because that certificate's gone away, then that will have an effect, based on the annual collection of $4 million, that's going to have a, an effect of about two and a half mils increase on county-wide services. So everybody in here is going to get about a two and a half mil increase.
I think it'd be three to three and a half is more realistic.
It's more realistic, okay? So there's another really drop dead, I mean, this thing has to be hammered out or the citizens are going to be at a huge loss.
I couldn't, I couldn't agree more. I mean, I think it's very, I think it's prescient, you know? We need to have a city that's willing to come to the table and negotiate in good faith with the county and with the other cities. I know we've established that the way that the law is set up could probably be written better, but it is a negotiating process, and I think we've got one party, as the county, that is sitting here willing to negotiate in good faith. At the same time, taking into consideration the, you know, issues that some of the other cities in this county may have and try to come to an agreement, but it takes all the cities, namely one large city, to come to the operate, to the negotiating table with us.
Okay, and what is your, I think it's been said for the last six months that there is no negotiating, and I know you want to get to the mediating part of it, but at what point of mediating and they don't come to negotiate with you, are you willing to say, we need to get this deal done and sign what we got?
I think the city of Bremen needs to answer that question.
No, at that point, it'd be up to, the county's got to answer that question. The city of Bremen has said repeatedly that they were willing to sign the 50-50 agreement, no, anytime. And that's been their position the whole time. So if they're not willing to come off that 50...
I don't think there's any, well, and that, well, that's the point, is they're not willing to come off the 50-50.
And they don't have to. By law, they do not to, and as a lawyer, you should know that.
I know the law actually quite well. The eight factors that go into this say that it's not strictly based on population the way that the city may have led us to believe.
And I will believe that the mediators, as we have discussed, and other ways that fly from the pie, it all comes back to nearly the same thing.
I don't think the issues with the 50-50 as much as it is with the second 50-50, or not the county's 50, the other 50, if you will.
And that's where exception is taken. When you start trying to dictate to a city as a county commissioner, you're trying to dictate to a city on how they're going to spend their money, that becomes a really tough, they don't sit up here and tell us how to spend our money.
I think they've actually attempted to kind of do that in a way by holding the rest of the county and the other cities hostage in a way in this negotiating process. But I don't know if this is really the appropriate venue to discuss this.
Yeah, well, maybe something to come more positive by mediation. I just hate for our county people to lose.
We're already in the non-binding mediation process, you know? The negotiations between ourselves are, we're over at the end of the month.
Okay, we'll wait until then, I'll be there.
Something like that, so this would be something that we do need to get the, pick an arbitrator and let's move our mediator, whichever one, and move on with this process.
But I just, and I'm all for it, I just want everybody in the public to know what's at stake on your tax bill if it's not settled.
And I'd really like to do it before we set the millage rate, if we could.
If we don't, and we can't, and we don't include it, we will sell ourselves short in the upcoming year. Bremen is already prepared, the fact that if that law certificate is lost, no pun intended, they have already recognized the fact that to the city of Bremen, it's going to be a two and a half mil increase to their citizens this year. So...
And it'll affect the county that much or more?
And it'll affect the unincorporated people even that much more. It'll affect the Tallapoosa, Buckhannon, Waco, that much more. So that's on, we'll wait till mediation.
Sounds good. Anything else? Anything else you want to bring up?
I'm good to go, Chairman.
Okay, that's going to end the work session part. We will move right on into the special call meeting. You want to do the invocation, Commissioner Brown, and then we do the pledge of allegiance.
Dear God, thank you for this day. Thank you for bringing us back safely today. We ask you to watch over our families, take care of those in our community, be with our country during this time, help us to make good decisions, lead and guide us, Lord, in all that we do and what we say. We thank you for the people that are serving our country. We thank you, Lord, for all the good things that you do for us every day. We ask that you watch over us, take care of us, helpful to be mindful of those around us, help us to be kind and be thoughtful, and try to do the best that we can to live a life that's pleasing to you. We ask all these prayers tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
The reply of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Somebody flipped the flag.
Somebody flipped the flag.
We missed that.
We're headed the wrong way. Yeah, well, that's one of the reports we've got. They finished the roof last Friday with the exception of doing the trim. They're supposed to be back this week, and we've, even hung the picture back up. It was, it had got so bad that we were afraid to leave it up, that it would get wet and run it, but we do have a new roof, and...
They'll get tested tomorrow.
Yeah, part of it fell in while they were putting it in. We were that close, so we got the good out of it.
You want me to make a motion to waive?
Yeah.
Make a motion, we waive reading the previous minutes.
Second.
A motion in second, all in favor, show your right hand. Okay, the approval of the agenda. I'd like to remove item number one. In the past, we don't have the public hearing and the vote on the same property at the, at the same time.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor, show your right hand. Okay, so we'll move item number one. Anything else? Anybody want to add anything? Good. Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Yeah. Okay. I'd like to add something. Can you withdraw your motion?
Yeah, I'll withdraw the motion on the floor.
Withdraw your second?
Yes, I will.
Okay. I'd like to add is item number three, the discussion of ARPA money? And how we're going to spend part of it? Now we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, show your right hand. Okay, item number two is resolution extend the moratorium on accepting applications for rezoning for any subdivision or land or residential use except for those court ordered. And I'd like for you to read that again because there's more exceptions to it than just being court ordered.
It says that the board may consider extenuating circumstances such as property involved in a lawsuit, the resolution or winding up of an estate, transfers to heirs at law, and property division pursuant to court orders. And the board would consider the, in addition to those circumstances, the proposed development, proposed use, and proposed development plans and the benefits of the development to the county. And just because the exemptions granted doesn't mean that the applicant or the plans or the application or request would necessarily be approved. It just means that they can move forward in the process for consideration.
They could come before the board.
That's correct.
And this covers any economic development that we might need?
Yes.
Say that again, they can come before the board in what?
Any economic development that the county might want to distribute land in some way, you know, section a piece off some way for economic development. It could, the board could approve that.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Any more? We need a motion in a second to approve.
I move that we extend the, that we adopt the resolution to extend the moratorium.
As read?
As read, excuse me.
Okay. Give a second. I'll make a second. And we got a motion in a second, all in favor, show your right hand. Okay, item number three is the ARPA money. We did receive the 2.8 million that the federal government said they'd send us in May, they finally sent it in July. So, but we were shocked to get anything. You know, we made some, like a fire truck, some commitments. We talked about some things and five patrol cars. Is that something y'all want to allow the fire chief and the sheriff to get bids on to go ahead and let's do that now? Yes, sir.
In our previous phase, we talked about getting body scans and, you know, we got some major, we talked about, and we were, it was about waiting to have the ARPA, we put that in our budget, it's a total of, also adding body scan, because it's covered with the ARPA.
Okay. Is that something y'all want to receive bids on, on the sheriff and the fire chief? I think we've got, the fire trucks were locked in, we negotiated a price through July, and I think they're up like $90,000 more than it would have been had we not...
We would get the, the last truck we just purchased, we did a, Chairman did a commitment letter pending this money, and they sent aside three trucks for us, for the same price of the $439,065, same price as the other. All these trucks did go up, and they did go up on us. They kept it pending this month.
They're still got it at that price?
It would be a $220,000 savings to the county on the three trucks. And that would put your new chief coming in with six new trucks. Same thing I did when I come in, we had six new trucks, and it would definitely eliminate some maintenance.
But this would have up to three trucks. One of them, we've already took delivery, the others would be here like in December, the one or the two.
That's what they told me, they would be, they're on the line, and they would be completed, be delivered December.
Okay.
But we only committed to one more, is that correct?
We, we committed, well, we didn't commit to any more.
No.
We took a option on up to two more, a total of three. option on up to two more, a total of three. So we could get two or we can get one or.
I don't have a problem getting bids. I mean, I'm not really, I don't know that we're in a position at the moment to make a decision on what we would accept. But I don't have a problem getting bids, you know, put out for them.
Yeah, I think that's what we need to do. That's what I'm asking is to get bids. This is ARPA money. This is not general fund money. This is not budget money. This is ARPA money and the Board of Commissioners has full control. We will have to vote on what bid to take.
So are we looking to use all this money towards something, public safety? Is that what I'm hearing?
No.
Okay.
We're trying to update a retiring fleet.
So then we'll use some of it, public safety, but some of it could be used for what else?
Basically anything. It's, you know, it had to, to start with, it had some real restrictions on it. But as it's went further and further down, and it's got less and less. And basically, a county that didn't receive $10 million or more, they don't have to report but once a year and what they used it for and basically use it for anything.
And how long do we have to spend this? When, when does, doesn't it expire? Is it two years?
You have to have it planned by '24 and spent by '26, by December of '26.
And it can be used in capitalizing buildings. You are renovated.
It can be used for renovating buildings. But there's many things that you can use it for. You can use it for things you would have spent out of the general fund. And then that frees up the general fund money that you can use in anything that you want it for.
We just, we cannot use it for salaries or raises or anything like that, though, can we?
Well, there's some question about salaries.
Okay.
I'd rather not touch that.
No, I, I didn't, I didn't think we were allowed to, period. I wouldn't be in favor of it even if we could.
Because once that's gone, we still got salary to contend with.
Yeah, we still got the salaries plus that opens up, I think, more if we're audit, you know, that they might want to audit it what they wouldn't before if we used it for something that they really gave the money for.
Okay.
Okay. So you're going to get us to the bids for the five patrol cars?
The last one we just, we just got her, we got the last five patrol cars. I need one of them under 100,000 dollars.
We don't want to go that route. We want to get patrol cars and get them in here. We don't want to wait 11 months.
We love to do it and others, um, you know, he worked in Maricopa down in Udilla. Ryan and stuff like this, we'll get them that thing, we're going to get them, get them there.
Yeah. Those last ones, the last ones, 11 months getting here.
We're in September, we got the first one like in March, first, April. All these chips off. And they just, we probably have to last one in, in June. Right now, we have the problem is we're building the cars like, we'll find it, put the bumper front, put it on front. Putting the partition in the back, it's still in the console. It's not much, we have them with the blue lights and all that stuff like that. But getting, the markets are still messed up as far as getting parts in. And that's across the board. Everybody's having that to have them, trying to get the records.
Were those cars coming already ready for the road with the lights and cages and decal?
Yeah, the only thing that has the decals and gets done locally and the cage, the partition in the back. And then the console is already wired and all the blue lights are put in. That way, you have to set the control panel, but the radio system, stuff like that, with the lights. Put, put the push button on the same phone, your rest and like that.
So all, is all that done now?
All of the ones, yeah. And three of them we got last one, that was the backup. The reason I just said you won't go, they're having a backup, they're trying to get parts, get things in.
What parts are those? You got to have to finish them?
All we require now, the last one we got, that is, that's the screen, go to the hundred dollar part in the console. Um, and wearing the, the lights of the console, wearing the lights to the console. We're having front, that's the bumper, that's the, I don't know exactly what the blue part is, but they get to a certain point, it's like you can't get the key components in because of the backup down around the car.
So how much more has this added to that $50,000 vehicle?
I think it's up there for about a dozen, that's, that's everything, so quick now. I think we want to set back, uh, we send him the building and the plate.
I think it was $49,700 and some few dollars.
Yeah, we figured it out around, right around $50,000 for those cars. And actually, it's broken down now. I think Brian said, well, everything's up. It's, I think, more than 20% of ours on this, we give them in. At this time, we, like I said, we ordered them back in September last, we're not going to do that again.
Okay.
Get us the bids. Chief, can you get three bids?
Yes, uh, call tomorrow because I know the other two is going to be late.
Okay. Is there anything yet? Is the motion done, Jerry?
I move that we adjourn.
All in favor? We adjourn?